I can't operate that way. I have to look at all kinds of angles. If I get there and some dear old black sister calls me God, they say she can't come in. Because she's, you know, not there for good reasons. And they say she can't come. But I ain't gonna go, I ain't gonna stay. I'll be at the dock, that's where I'll be. So I can't promise you what hell I'm gonna do. I can't promise you, life doesn't offer you the simple solutions you want. Some of you people are hunting for simple solutions. And if you stay awake, we only have to have one night to show you that there are no simple solutions. Where are the guards going? These people are sitting, standing up, sitting asleep. So we can quit tomorrow and rest in and go back to production, goddammit. We've got enough reasonable accords. It don't look like we're on the verge of death in Guyana this moment. So we get this thing settled tonight, so we can go back to production, be ready for tasks. And once they get us to Moscow, we got a republication in Moscow. We'll have more security, but they won't kill us here. I don't get you, I can't talk to a bunch of people who are asleep. Now shift please. Well, wake them up, get them up by God, something.
Okay, hold on. Don't be, don't be wasting time here. We're gonna be standing by a minute here. Uh, if we can't listen, I will tell. Eight oh one, who is the closest friend? Or two, I will let square just visiting, who is the closest friend?
I don't know what you're saying.
And who we're hearing.
Come back here please. Five D's P, I'm telling you, shoot them, that's the best way. Shoot these sons of bitches. They took the tax attention away, and we got it back in the street. There's another goddamn bunch of fighting. We got that back, but it can be taken away again. They took our name, our corporation, everything, took it away. And we got it back, it stayed in California, but that means we still gotta fight the federal government. Get it all written down, see if you can. Okay, we're standing in line by Cuba. I guess, I don't care, we're standing in line there. I guess that's what we're talking about, didn't it?
Um, uh, uh, I, I'm...
Did you shift?
I don't wanna go nowhere without Dad. Uh, he don't wanna go leave without us, and I don't wanna leave without him. So, I'm, I'm, I may, I've been staying about this real hard, and, uh...
Remember, people come from different experiences and perspectives and education. The elderly, at different levels. So always keep that in mind, any choice you make with the, with the person you're talking to. Go ahead, Carrie, you've been on.
I'm getting on, I think you will. And I don't feel like I have...
I don't even work your ass off.
I feel like I have minimum working years. So, I think I'd be more productive, with more benefit to the cause. If at some point that I could get back to some of the enemies and kill until I could kill. I mean that from the depths of my heart, because I didn't come here to live always. And I've said it from a child, I never wanted to live.
This is fantastic. Now I wanna show you an example of why I have my loyalty. Um, Carrie, what am I to you?
You, your dad, your mother, just everything you do.
What about them for you?
You heal my body, you heal me of cancer.
Right there, they block her, right there. But yet, what would you do with such a woman as this, who says, "I don't think I should go to Cuba. I should go back, I'm a senior, my working days are over." What would you do? Would you go on into Cuba when they blocked you? Think about it. That's why you people make these simple-minded, quick decisions, need to think. That's the most beautiful testimony I've heard, that people with college degrees, it won't make it. Mm-hmm, that's why you treat my people with civility when they come up. And know who they are, and get to know them. She worked her ass off, been a slave, domestic servant, worked her ass off in her rest home. Anybody that worked with Helen Swinney has to have a lot of temper. Uh-huh, that's true. Helen's got her good points, and worked her ass, and faithful, but it's not easy to work for Helen Swinney. And being black and having been taking orders from white folk all your life, that makes you double hard. So there, that's my answer to you. If they say, "Well, I, I, well, I don't know about this woman." If they say somebody, "Well, I don't know, you got too many seniors, I don't know whether we can handle it, you don't have any..." How much income you gonna have, and, you know, I don't know what they're gonna say. I just heard they said they'd take us. They don't know how many, how old our age, average age is. I don't know if they've gone into that, you better go into it. I don't believe in dreams, I believe in no facts. But I ain't going no place that I can't drag if I have to carry my mother ever at a hundred meters. If I have to put one on my shoulder, if I have to lead, um, and then some countries won't take the blind. This country wouldn't take the blind, they're gonna stop Mercer. Most, all nations will not take the blind. Mercer got here, I said, "Fuck it, white knight." And they had a white knight over Mercer, 'cause they, they should change their mind right there. I said, "He ain't coming in here, we're going out." Man been blinded by the fascist. But every country in the world has the disabled, the handicapped, the blind. Now that's socialist, you name it, they're all, they're the same. Capitalists are worse, but they do want productive people. And some of my young aren't productive, and some of my seniors are too old to be productive, and some are too senile to be productive. And I could go further and say some are too mean, but I don't know that for sure, 'cause you can't judge what's senility. And you don't know all the past. And we're gonna have a hell of a contribution here when the Cubans come. When Russia comes in here, we wanna see the goddamnedest workforce you ever saw. If they see that workforce and ever senior moving that day, I think that'll make the difference, 'cause Cuba will be told to do what, what Russia tells them to do. If Russia says, "Do it." And I mean, Russia tells Cuba what to do. They got shit, they got all kinds of things in Cuba that Russia doesn't have. Shit on TV and movies, and some of the American movies, you wanna see the bullshit. They, they allow that stuff. But, um, and then, different attitudes on homosexuality than the Russians. I'm gonna tell you, you go to Russia, don't try no public homosexuality. 'Cause Russia believes that it is non-productive, and that it's, that the country needs to produce, and they don't want nobody going homosexual, because they won't have babies, and they want production, 'cause the capitalists will outnumber them. It's that simple fact. Now Cuba has more understanding of it. 'Cause they do allow it. They just point at you, shame you, take you out of a sensitive job, if you're in a classified job. So that's, there, there, there's one case, there's a case and example. And I wasn't coming with heavy questioning, I was coming with messy questioning. She said, "You're my dad, my mother," that might get him right there, threaten him. But when she said, "You're here, you're cancer." That's it. Say she's not a Marxist candidate. I know you wouldn't, honey, necessarily. I'm not, no criticism of you, 'cause you said the best thing I heard tonight. You don't need to feel bad about that. You said, "The best thing I heard tonight, I'm at the end of my life, I don't know if I can be any good there. I'd like to go back and kill all the enemies I can kill, until they kill me." What more can you say? What more can you say than that? So you asked me to make a decision if I'm going to Cuba, somebody hollers over there, "Are you going to Cuba with us?" I will go to Cuba with us, unless they keep anybody out. And then I will sit on that dock until they throw me, oughta throw me to jail. 'Cause the moment they say no to anybody, that's it. That's all I got left. I think I'm the only pure communist, I've had a pure loyalty to this entire family. And I'm not now gonna start spinning off which ones I'm gonna take care of. I'll take these children, I won't take that, you can do with those children what you want, uh-uh, fuck it. It's all or none, that's my motto. I'd just soon die, and prefer to die, oh my, how much most of us would. Prefer to die tonight anyway, than take the chances with fucking human beings, 'cause they're too insensitive, and they've not come down the communist path I have, and, uh, a whole lot of the, of the leaders haven't come down the communist path, that some of the rest of you have. So that, that's my opinion. I told you as accurate as I know about Cuba, now you can make up your own mind. But I can, I can't promise you what the hell's gonna happen when our boat gets there. You can have a white knight in the harbor. We can do that. Set the son of a bitch afire, if they refuse to take somebody. And once you land and you're not a solid movement, you don't have that flexibility of, of making white knights. They don't wanna take some blind person, they don't wanna take some handicap person. Are they questioning somebody's communist understanding? I don't think they'll be that insensitive. I don't think, but I don't know. I know my morality, I don't know these fucking people's morality. I know mine. Some come blind, some come a halt, some come mean, but all come calling their father's name, and father treats you just the same. And that, that's, that's my socialism, that's my communism. But I don't know about other people's socialism, I haven't tested theirs yet. I'll know it, and I'll believe it, when we're in the dock, and we're landed, and we got some land, and they treat us all the same. That's what I believe. I believe that there's some opportunism there, they see it's a large American group, they can make political hay. If they can weigh that against, uh, all the other odds, and I think one of the odds will be Jim Jones, say, "This fucker is courageous, he is a leader, he will do anything for his people, we better not let him have that much power." That's what I think they'll say. They won't tell us that officially, but I think that's what, that's what'll come. And that don't bother shit for me, if they get you all there. But I'm, when he, when you don't, we better make our stand on the fucking boat, because if we don't get our way on the boat, once you get in the dock, they can do with you what you want, when they send you a son over here, and a son over there. Cuba's small, you can meet different parts of Cuba, and we could get to see each other, but it's, uh, uh-huh. It's hell, I make you think, I know, it must be awful painful, I wasn't talking to you. I wasn't talking to you, shit, you been around me, I know what you wanna do. You told me plenty of time, you wanna go home and kill them all too. My, my kids are all wanting to go back to kill them. Everybody's about, you know, I'm gonna go back and kill all these sons of bitches, wipe it up, and let them kill them. Haven't had a kid, haven't had a one kid, I haven't talked loose much about it, but I, he may have a little different perspective, he's got a little boy. But, uh, hm, well, I didn't think it was, but I'm just saying, I haven't, uh... So you gotta, you gotta, you gotta think, you can't just go, "Well, go to Cuba." Life ain't that simple. My God, I didn't live here that simple. I fought till I, what, Jesus? Yeah, see, that's what I mean. Yeah, Jesus, tell me, wipe Jesus out, honey. You better wipe him out of your vocabulary, if you wanna get someplace else. Now, when I got down here to get you here, and I saw this shit coming before it hit the fan, I went this first time, I knew it was coming. I got it saw one day before the shit hit the fan, or nobody's been here. 'Cause this government wasn't gonna let nobody else in. 'Cause Huey Newton wanted to come in there, refused him. And we barely made it. So don't think it's that easy to get someplace you wanna go. And what is the old saying? Pig in the, I don't, bird in the bush? Bird in the hand is with two birds in the bush. And I see the Russian bird and the Cuban bird, as the two birds in the bush. I got this bird in the hand, and for me, I, 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 I'm in a hell of a dilemma. I'd do damn near anything. I'd do this, I'll tell you this, I'd do this, if the seniors would go along with me, if some seniors blocked from getting in, we'll, we'll make a, we'll die, we'll all die right there on the boat, and the rest of you can go on in. I'd rather do that than face killing every baby in this house. But I'm gonna tell you, the ones that are refused, I'm staying with them, and I'm dying with them. I'm not going in. Whoever's refused, I'm not going in. I ain't gonna change that. 'Cause if I changed that, I'd be immoral, and I couldn't live with myself, and I, and that's all I've ever had. Didn't have good looks, don't have no money anymore, I was a millionaire, gave it away. All I've got is my principles, and I've lived by those. Some of you think you're good-looking, and I know all the shit you think about yourself. You think you're a big fuck, and I could fuck still, as old as I am, I could fuck any wife away from any one of you. Yeah, no, 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 you wanna gamble? Wanna gamble a little bit, if you give me, if you, if you work twenty-two hours a day, let's just gamble with me. Yeah, I don't see nobody putting up. You better not. Don't be too sure of yourself. Say, "My wife don't like you, why don't you spend the night with me?" You pricks, I'm just, I don't like even talking about it. Sex makes me sick, but I just know some of you people, you're so stuck on yourself. You've never developed any other characteristics, 'cause you think all you need is a dick. And your dick wouldn't be worth nothing else tonight, only we're slightly hungry, we would fry it and use it as sausage. That's why you don't have the principles, you don't have the character, because you always thought, all you needed was your good looks, and you're ugly as I am. And bless the one of you, young or old. And I didn't say, how many, that's right. So how many noticed, said that's right? Seven, eight people said that's right. Let me watch, you watch how quickly somebody drops you someday. But I ain't dropping you. I've been dropped, I've seen people dropped. I ain't dropping nobody. So when it stops anybody there, I stop, and at that point, I don't go. They can say, "Yeah, Jim, you can come in, we've got a nice job for you and the government, we'll put you here or there," or someplace. I say, "Fuck you." If, if my little lady here down here can't go, if she can't go, then I don't go. You understand what I'm saying? If some kid with a criminal record, or some child's custody papers are in question, I, I say, "Hmm." I don't know, that's, that's what it be. So now, I don't know how you're gonna do, you wanna, I know, make it easy, if you wanna go in, I don't bother me, go on in. I stay on the fucking boat, some of us will stay there. And we'll go out to sea, like those that just floated out to sea on that thing when they put all the Jews, and sent them out, Hitler knew that nobody'd take them in. He said, "They, yeah, he said, 'You people want them,' said, 'We'll send them from port to port, see if they'll take them.'" Sent the Jews all around from port to port. What was that book called, with that ship, story? What? No, No Exodus, well, No Exodus, well, that boy, they sent that goddamn boat around with Jews. And, and he sent them from port to port, and then nobody, nobody'd take the Jews in. Ship of fools, yells, or whatever, I mean, we got my stories mixed up here. But anyway, whatever, that's what I'll do, we just go out to sea and let us float, float till we can't float no more. We take too much of communism to try to embarrass the communist port. We wouldn't do that to Cuba, 'cause she's done something for Angola, we just float on out to sea. And there we'd die peacefully. And the rest of you can go in there and say, "Some of these babies would have to die." You can take the babies. And I'll go with the ones that can't get in. That'll be my decision. And I gotta write to my decision, just like you gotta write to yours. How's that, how's that, how's that go? What did I just say, Christine? How'd I say, what did I just say? No, I mean the whole subject.
Oh, you were saying that if we got there, and they wouldn't take one of the seniors, or one of the, uh, young people, or some of them that were disabled, uh, but you just wouldn't go, you'd stay on the ship. We could go on if you, you know, if you wanted to. But you wouldn't go, if Ron couldn't go.
What would you do?
Know what I do?
You know, Father never asks the question without a reason. Father never asks a question without a reason. He's the all-knowing mind.
Nah, I don't know, I haven't thought on it yet.
That's why I asked you. That's why I am who I am. I know the mind. I knew you hadn't. You're standing in the gap of the hedge in the sun, but you're honest, some others will tell me a lie. But you always know, always know who I am. I don't talk about all I know, but I can look right through your mind, know what's going on, and know when you, what you're halting between two opinions. So why isn't somebody gonna say, when he walks in there, "He's God"? So you can understand how they're gonna make that mistake. Who else can know your thoughts? That's all there are, the new that can know your thoughts. But I asked you a question, honey, I always got a reason. Not for her benefit, I'm not saying, she knows it now, I'm telling you. And don't think, 'cause I, I look at you, and you may be thinking something, and you may be thinking even to me, and I may smile at you, but I don't know what you're thinking to, I'm not talking about her in this regard. You, you don't, you don't know how much I know about you. If you did, you would shit right there in your drawers. If you knew how much I know about you, when I take a look at you, you would know. You'd shit in your drawers. You try these silly-ass games with me, and the old fox is just looking right to you. Standing and telling me all this shit about how long you've been, how faithful you've been, I know everything you did in the States. I know how quick you, and how even so you planned to go against this cause. Don't tell me no shit, don't lie to me. You're, you're killing yourself when you lie to me. You're cutting me off from that which I can do to you, to help you when you're down in the valley and nobody else can lift you up. Just as long as we know that when you're getting up and lying in my face, she didn't lie, she told me. A lot of you say, "Oh, I don't know how you'll call me out." They try to second-guess you. "I, I, I would stay with you, Father." But she didn't know. And I would say, that, that's what makes me such a loving emancipator. I'm not telling her what to say. I know what I must do. "To thine own self be true." And I don't care who follows me, unless it's in their heart. It must be persuaded in your own heart. Whatever man, whatever woman, be persuaded in his own heart. And while they sleep, it's the same old situation. You're in the garden. You talked about Jesus, and you used to cry. And you're in the garden tonight. And he's facing crucifixion, and you're asleep. "Would thou not stay with me awake a moment? Would you not keep yourself awake in these trying hours?" But I'm not trying to save me from crucifixion, I'm trying to save you from crucifixion. What is this crucifixion? I'm trying to save you, not the crucifixion of your body, but crucifying your conscience, which makes you more dead than anything ever can be dead, is when you crucify your principles. That's a death worse than any white knight. Now I've spoken in that degree that nobody else has. A doctor of metaphysics. I would say other terms, but they're all misused and abused. Okay, next person.
Uh, Ben, uh, my first thought is, uh, to, um, I'm trying to take every measure to remain here. And if we couldn't, if we felt that we could go to Cuba for the sake of the babies...
Yes.
Uh, that would be beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
But if, as, as you say, if we cannot go together, I would rather not. I want me, uh, like, I'd be going to Cuba, and if we did not have the, uh, full responsibility of the group, if we could say manage it in a humanitarian, uh, position, and we could be together, that would be beautiful, and we would not have the, the, the heavy burden that you have now.
That's sweet of you.
I, I think of a lot of respect.
No, my love, you have this option. If we could not, if we could not, be, if, if you have to stand with me in my conscience, if your conscience is like mine, and you have to stand with me in that hour, we can still let those go on in that can have a life ahead of them, the children, who won't feel that much, they'll forget us in time. Time heals. And then those of us that want to drift to sea can drift into the oblivion. We have no ego, what are we seeking? We're not seeking a page in history, no. Only egotists seek, seek, only capitalists, only some kind of a visionary socialist, seek to be a page in history. Why do we care? We can drift on out to sea. It's better than killing every baby that we ever created. I'm not, I wasn't negating her. And I hope that each of you, though I called out one who I knew her thoughts, I hope each of you that was still debating like she was, know that I know you do, so don't start dressing it up. Don't come up here and stand like the angel of goodness, 'cause I know where your mind is. I know where your fears are. I know how tired you are. Okay.
Uh, Ben, um, I, I didn't think that point through, uh, but while you were talking, I did. And I think, uh, we should have it negotiated before we, uh, make the decision. In other words, we, we get Cuba's agreement to admit everybody that Dad wants to bring along. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't go if they don't, but I'm saying that then we have to rethink the situation. Uh, there's a couple of other points I'd like to make.
Is that a little too close to you? Can you hear me well? Thank you, Jeff. I, um, I think there's one angle to it, I hope that Dad doesn't mind my mentioning this, but that is, that I think if we had to split up and be assimilated into Cuba, uh, into Cuban life, the opportunity that Dad would have would be even more than it is now. A leader of world communism, because his talents could not be hidden. And, uh, anybody on the world scene would see that he was a great world leader. And I don't think life would be any easier for him. Probably be harder, if that's possible, than it is now. But, but I think, uh, the scope that would open up for him and for us
Shift please.
To deal with such things as Africa, for instance, the African nations, the, um, the close union there is between Soviet Russia and Cuba, I think would offer him an opportunity. And besides, I think it would offer a great opportunity for our young people. Uh, I, I think there's, uh, all kinds of possibilities that would open to it. I'm not oblivious of the fact that I think it's a great misfortune that we can't stay together as a group. I would hope that we could, but I doubt it. But I think there are advantages on the other side. Uh, there's one other thing that I don't think has been emphasized enough yet, and that is that, uh, some people will be handicapped in having the language Spanish, and some of the, uh, some people might find it difficult to learn, and they might be lonesome. For an English-speaking country, I've been in this situation, where, where you don't speak the language, you sometimes get homesick. Uh, and this is a factor to be thought of. Our young people would learn it, of course, very easily. Uh, but those are the comments that I want.
Now if you were thinking, and it wasn't so late, someone could, they had beautiful thoughts and rationale, could, there could be an advocate of the other side. I believe, I believe I heard her say, "There'd be advantages if our group were broken up." That's where I'd like to really be satisfied on, that, I really would like to be satisfied that it would benefit. Quiet, please. All right, Larry, how can you, you got to relate to the next, she's, okay, quickly, we'll get her, but I want to... All right, wait, how can you, you got to relate to the next, she's, okay, quickly, we're good, but I want to, of course, it's giving you some meat for dollars, it's giving you some meat for dollars. So I think we need to remember her positions, if I don't know, I will remember them all. One, she said that I'd be a great, great, I could be a more expanded, extensive world leader. Second was, um, high point was that, uh, language problem's gonna be a problem, and, and I tell you, if you don't try to learn the language, that-